I'm having some pics issues with my laptop, so I may have to be on my phone, but I'm still working on it.
Mayor, do you have what you want to present pulled up?
I may not be able to because I'm on my phone. My laptop is not acting appropriately.
Okay. Oh, shoot.
I'm working on.
Let me go get it. Oh. I believe we are live on Facebook now, everyone.
I can't tell. Can you see? Never mind. I guess you can't. Yeah, whatever reason, my video is not working, so I'm gonna try and figure out something here to get this together.
Well, I'm I'm trying to pull it up right now, Mayor.
Actually, I take that back. Can you see it on here?
I can see it.
Yes, I can see it.
Yeah. Yes.
I can see it.
All right, so everybody can see him, but you cannot see me.
Well, now you can see him, but when he has his his shared thing up. What if you sure, um, minute not that shrinks it all the way down, but minimize it, the one in the middle. See if that lets you do a split screen. Yeah. Yeah. Sorry.
All right. So you should see me in one picture and then a blank screen on the other. Is that what we have here?
Yes.
All right, well, I guess that at least part of it works.
If.
I don't see a blank screen. I see the picture of the person who's talking, which is now Director Bowser. And I see the PowerPoint in um in slide presentation mode. It's not, it's it shows the slides on one side and then the very first slide to the right.
Okay. Then that's the way we'll work and we'll just work it through this.
Great.
Sorry, nobody needs to see me anyway. Got the face for radio.
But we can see you.
I know, on the other one.
If you push up to the top instead of speaker view and you click on gallery view, you can see his shared screen on the left and you can see everybody's face to the right.
You just shut that one down.
And then whoever's broadcasting the live feed on Facebook, if they did the same thing, that way there's like one big screen and then you could still see everyone's smiling face.
Ah, so better smile.
We improvise, we adapt, we overcome.
That's pretty much 2020 in a nutshell.
Okay, I had about a gallery screen. Now I don't see that option.
Councilwoman, try looking up at the right corner. There should be like if you've entered in fullscreen, maybe it's just to the left. There should be like a speaker view or it'll say gallery view.
Hi, Ms. Wojciech, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Um, we, your portion of the meeting will be after citizen comments and then the president will recognize you for your presentation.
Sure, that sounds great.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Um, I'm so sorry. Will I be able to screen share?
Yes, you can.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
We're all screen sharing this evening.
Perfect.
We're waiting on three additional council members. One additional council member. Madam President, everyone is is here.
Thank you, Molly. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order our July 27 Reynoldsburg City Council meeting. The time is now 6:33. I am Angie Jenkins, Council President. This meeting is being held through electronic conferencing and livestreamed on the city's Facebook page. Molly, would you please call the role?
Councilmember Cotner.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Strickland.
Here.
Councilmember Savadi.
Here.
Councilmember Pecorall.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Here.
And President Jenkins.
Here. Next, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Saying none, the agenda stands as approved. The approval of minutes. The approval of City Council's regular meeting minutes of July 13, 2020. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Saying none, the minutes stand approved as submitted. Next, we'll have community comments. Do we have any comments from the community?
Madam President, there's one from the Reynoldsburg Football Parent Association. The Reynoldsburg Football Parent Association, a 501(c)(3) organization, is preparing for the upcoming fall 2020-2021 Reynoldsburg Junior High and High School football season. Unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 and social distancing, we are limited in our fundraising events for the upcoming season. While we are waiting to receive communication from OSHA and the Reynoldsburg School District regarding guidelines that must be adhered to. For the upcoming season, we are reaching out to obtain your commitment to support players and coaches by way of donating a game day meal, snacks, drinks, or monetary contributions to the program. Your contributions are desperately needed and will be much appreciated. On behalf of the Reynoldsburg Head Football Coach Buddy White and the Reynoldsburg Football Parents Association, we sincerely thank you in advance for your generosity. If you have any questions or if you can provide additional information, please reach out to either Desiree Elder, Assistant Treasurer, or Stephanie Wood, General Board Member. They both did provide emails and phone numbers, but the general football association email is ReynoldsburgFootball, all one word, at gmail dot com. Madam President, that's all of the community comments I have.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments from council?
Madam President, I'd like to share something, if I may.
Yes.
Good evening, Madam President, Mayor, Members of Council and community. I'd like to share with you that we have a neighbor named April Darling. And she, along with the Lions Club, are sponsoring a school supply drive. And she actually contacted me asking if she could do this, and I said absolutely. I, and I'm sure Members of Council would be just thrilled to support you in any way that we can. So the Lions Club is sponsoring the school supply drive, and I'd like for you to jot down these notes. There will be further information, but just so that we keep it top of mind. August 15th is the day of drop off and it will be at City Hall from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. under a pop-up tent similar to what the toy drive was the past couple of weeks. August 29th will be the pass out day, 10 a.m. to 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. I wanted to remind you all that the tax-free holiday is August 8th. And what the goal is, is she'd like to prepare 150 bags. And what she's in greatest need of are pens, pencils, markers, crayons, paper, glue stick, pencil boxes, folders, composition notes, coloring books, tissues, and sanitizers. So if you have any questions for her specifically, you may reach out to her via email, and that is aprilsrpto@yahoo.com. So that's aprilsrslateridgepto@yahoo.com. And I'd like to personally challenge my colleagues to to donate and to volunteer your time. And so I look forward to seeing you August 15th or August 29th. And my personal challenge is to beat me to volunteering, no, I'm sorry, beat me to donating school supplies. And we all know that we have a little healthy competition and I won't call anyone out, Madam President. So April Darling is actually keeping score of who donates school supplies first. So thank you so much.
Okay, there's, so the competition is who gives her something first?
Yes, ma'am.
So we need to run over there tonight? And you probably have already done it because you already have the plan, so you probably have already beat us.
No, ma'am, I have not beaten you. It's a competition. The kid for the winners. I just challenge you to for us to give. There are most vulnerable neighbors and we want to support them as we all do. So thank you so much for your time. Absolutely. That sounds great. I'm excited to donate, so yes.
Madam President, if I can say a couple of things, if you don't mind.
Yes, go ahead. Donna Strickland, Ward 1.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give a shout out again regarding the Reynoldsburg Football Parent Association. I have been really involved with the organization over several years, and this is a trying time for everyone and of course our players. I know how important it is to give back, give back to your time from a financial perspective and also just volunteering. You know, that even though the season may be still up in the air, it's very important that we still provide, you know, snacks, water, whatever it may be, to help them out. Because if they not able to use them for us this year, it can't carry on to the following year. So I just want to again challenge my colleagues to donate to the Reynoldsburg Football Parent Association because it is important from a community perspective and also adjusting courage to courageous our young people. Also, I do want to give a huge shout out to our President Jenkins. She is on the job. When we end up doing the the mask, mandating the mask wearing here in Reynoldsburg, our president, she went the extra mile to see about trying to get donations for our community, especially the small business local businesses here in Reynoldsburg. And we, the women of Reynoldsburg, that includes our President Jenkins, myself, and also Councilwoman Lawson Rowe. We went to several businesses here in Reynoldsburg to just show our appreciation to our local businesses and just show them that we are still here, we are still supporting you. I just want to give a quick shout out to Joanne's Bridle, Barber's Zone, Ohio Select, Raider Nutrition, Ivy League Daycare, Shining Stars Daycare, and Kindred Care. We will still be in our community providing donations as much as we can. But I wanted to just show appreciation to our president for taking the extra step to finding donations for our local businesses here in Reynoldsburg. Also, I would love to give a shout out to the Premier One Health, Ohio National Guards, Reynoldsburg City Council, and also Reynoldsburg Police Department. This morning, I had an opportunity to take the COVID-19 testing. And I'm telling you, our police officers were right on it. It did not take long. So again, I want to, everyone that was involved in bringing that here to Reynoldsburg, thank you so much. My son have to take the test before he actually reports to school on August the 5th. So shout out to everyone that was involved in that effort. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments and thank you for the shout out. I appreciate it and appreciate your support in giving out the masks to the local businesses here in Reynoldsburg. We're better together, right? Do we have any other comments from anyone else on council? Do we have any comments from the mayor?
Yes, Madam President, Members of Council, thank you very much. Just a couple of quick announcements tonight. First of all, yesterday was the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And so there is a proclamation for that. It is rather lengthy, so I will hold off on sharing that, but it will be posted online early tomorrow morning. And I do have one additional announcement. We are actually in the last stages of closing out the YMCA project. As a matter of fact, we're just a few days away from doing this. Working together with Gilbane CT Consultants and YMCA, I'm happy to report that a significant amount of money will be returned to the CIP, CIP Fund when you return from your summer recess. I'd like to thank everybody involved for bringing this project to a close, to council and the community of Reynoldsburg for their support. And again, once I have those final figures locked in, I will go ahead and make sure that is available to you. And we'll have that for you at the September, first September meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll have a presentation, Franklin County Auditor Triennial Update, and that is coming from Mr. Cole.
That's actually me, Cole Voitach.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
For cutting in because I'm reading my notes and I'm trying to pronounce the name right. I'm trying not to mess up, but thank you for that. I appreciate that. Yes.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm just going to share my screen here, if that's all right with folks. I've just got a quick presentation. I promise I won't take too much of your time. And I need to start this from the beginning. All right, are folks able to see this presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. And I'm happy to send this, maybe I can have whoever's organizing, send this after the fact so that council members can have it as they so please. Um, so just to start, Mayor, Members of Council, Madam President, thank you so much for welcoming us and giving us in our office this opportunity this evening. My name's Cole. I am the Senior Executive Assistant to Franklin County Auditor Michael Stenziano. I also worked with him when he was on Columbus City Council, so I know I've gotten to collaborate with a number of the folks on the call this evening, so it's very nice to see all of your faces. Um, I'm just going to give a brief update on some of the things that our office is doing and some of the important things that we have coming up that is specifically of concern to the residents of Franklin County and to your constituents, and then also just talk through kind of some of the COVID procedures as well. Um, I will give a quick shout out to Councilmember Pecorall, who's been instrumental in helping us with some of this project, so I'm sure he would be able to answer some questions as well. Uh, so I'm just gonna dive right in and hope not to take too much of everyone's time. Um, as I said, I'm with Franklin County Auditor's Office. So just real quick, because you know, we can't really have a meeting without talking about it at this point. Um, just wanted to go over some of the COVID-19 shifts that our office has had to make. Per the governor's initial stay-at-home order, many of our office functions were deemed essential. Um, so our office has actually never closed. While we may be closed to the public, we've still been chugging along since March 16th. Um, and we we alternate what staff we have in the building and who's telecommuting to be able to meet the needs of the office. We've been conducting as much as we can, online video conference through mail over the phone. And one of the biggest shifts that we've actually had to make this year, one of the biggest pivots, as we're calling it, is with this triennial update, and so I'll go into kind of more of the specific precautions and procedures that we are changing about this process here in a little bit. Um, also wanting to let folks know that the Board of Revision is still holding hearings. They've been transitioned over to virtual and they've been going really well. Folks have found it to be, uh, you know, as good as we can expect in this time of COVID, right? Um, and then also just wanting to make sure as we're talking to different groups, while this isn't, you know, specifically a function of our office, it's one that we do collaborate in some respects with the treasurer on, so just want to make sure that everyone's aware that the property tax deadline has been extended to August 5th that is coming up, so wanting to make sure that we're reminding folks of that. Um, as that has gotten extended and is coming up. Um, so the triennial update will be going ahead as scheduled. It's just gonna look a little bit different. Um, and then this is just kind of reminding folks additionally about the property tax payment and advanced timeline. There are still the 10 advance opportunities weekly until August 19th, and then that final advance would be September 25th. But you can feel free to reach out to the treasurer's office if you need any more information on that as well. All right. Meat and potatoes of why I'm here. So the triennial update is basically the midpoint of our appraisal cycle. So our appraisal cycle is a six-year cycle. Every six years, we have the mass reappraisal, which looks at properties on an individual level. Every three years of that, we do something called the triennial review, which is basically a a checkup on those property values, and it's done at a neighborhood level. Every three, well, the third year of that six-year cycle. So the data that this is based off of has been for 17, 18, and 19, and then this data will be used for 2021 and 22, which is when the next full appraisal will be. Um, so in the triennial reappraisal, we've got residential and commercial property values that will be updated on that neighborhood basis. And then specifically for this triennial, the the appraisal neighborhoods are the delineations that we use. While they don't follow specifically school districts, they do tend to reside kind of within pockets within neighborhoods. And so those neighborhoods have been updated for this year with boundaries to try to account for for the real-time variations that we see within singular neighborhoods. So you know, we we want to be not lumping, you know, North Linden practically Clintonville in with the same with the same values as South Linden, just because we see houses there looking a lot different. And so we want to make sure that we are comparing your property and your residents' properties to other like properties. And so we want to make sure that we are comparing your property and your residents' properties to other like properties. So what to expect from the triennial review? We are coming up to the point where tentative values will be made public in, I'm going to jinx it by saying it out loud, but in the next month. We're just waiting to hear back from the State Department of Tax on those at this point. And so after we receive those, we will be able to move forward with our informal process, which I will get more into. But just as a general overview of all of the data, these are the basics that we are seeing for every different kind of class of property. And feel free to stop me if anyone has questions. I'll also have time to take some at the end, but this is a lot of information. And so I'm powering through as long as I'm comfortable with that. All right. So one of the things that we do like to share is this is the average percent increase per school district. And this is one that's a little bit more fun to dive into when you're kind of reviewing this data one-on-one. But as you can see, based on school district, Reynoldsburg is looking at potentially a 21% average increase. This is also the first point that I want to remind folks that I property tax, or I'm sorry, property value does not equal property taxes, right? So just because we're seeing a percent increase in property value does not mean that that is going to translate to a direct percent increase in taxes. I'm going to say that until I'm blue in the face, because a lot of this looks really scary until we remember that. And so just wanting to make sure that folks are aware of those relationships between value and property taxes. This is just the vocational school districts. So as we are, you know, talking to residents and especially community leaders who have residents who talk to them, we want to make sure that you guys have all of the information that we have in terms of the various school districts and how they're impacted. So one of the, one of the biggest sort of pivots comes in the September portion. So of our triennial timeline, as we talked about in August 2020, towards the end of August, the tentative value mailer will go out to residents. And this will notify people of their new tentative value and what the process is to contest or oppose that value. Whether you think it's too high or too low, or we just don't have the complete picture. There will be a robust engagement process and opportunity for residents. That robust opportunity comes in the month of September. So from, for the entire month of September until October 3rd, we will be hosting what we call informal review sessions. So this is a one-on-one, basically, conference between the property owner and a licensed appraiser, either from our office or someone who is doing this work on behalf of our office. And they want to know why residents disagree with whatever value we provide. So whether, you know, that's additional documentation, if there's been a lot of updates internally that we're just not able to see, or if there are other issues that we're unable to see just from our kind of neighborhood level, we want to know that. And we understand that the homeowners and the residents know their properties the best. They are experts in their investments. And so we want to make sure that we have all of the information from the experts that we can. These informals, and we'll go into this a little bit more in depth on the next slide, but these informals are going to be offered via video conference, via phone conference. And we will have a limited number of in-person slots available for folks who might not be able to have access to, you know, phone, internet, anything that they would need. So we are still offering very limited in-person hours. But one of the things that we are requiring is that everyone schedules. That's a change this year. And so the the hope and the intention is that as much as possible, we can shift people towards the online informal process or the remote informal process. But if that is not possible for a certain individual, we are able to accommodate them. Then after we gather all that information from residents, our internal appraisers prepare the final abstract with the adjusted values to send to the Ohio Department of Taxation. Once those go to DTE, they will be approved or not. And then they will come back to the treasurer for the final tax bills to be determined using that new official value. So when those final values are determined, tax bills will go out from the treasurer. And then also any resident who has attended, who has attended an informal review session with our office will receive a mailer letting them know that their value has been finalized as well. And that's if they attend online, on the phone, or in person. Or if they just submit documentation, that's an option as well this year. That if residents don't necessarily want to meet with us, just want to give us what they have, we'll have an opportunity for them to do that as well during that that month of September. So then getting into kind of the nitty-gritty of the specific changes to the informal process, largely, it's just that we can't do them in person anymore. Past administrations in Franklin County have done these more as just kind of an open cattle call. We'll have, you know, 30 appraisers in one building downtown from eight to six for like a month. And that just obviously was not feasible this time around. So largely, the biggest change is that we are going to be doing some of these virtually and some of them remotely. The other biggest change is that scheduling component. So previously, scheduling had only been offered to commercial property owners. And we are really wanting to make that something that's available to all residents. I don't think that just because you're a commercial property owner, and neither does the auditor, that because you're a commercial property owner, you should get a dedicated slot of time that you'll be seen. And a residential owner isn't going to, and that just, that was not going to work for us this year. So everyone is going to be encouraged to schedule. They can do that by calling our office or going to our website. The website is now launched. It's your2020homevalue.org. And as we get the information that we need back from the state, as the tentative values get locked in, and as we get closer to that informal start date in September, more information will be continuously posted to that website. There's also a really great video explaining this entire process a little bit more in-depth and plenty of other information, as well as a preview of what the residential mailer will look like. So feel free to check that out yourself or send residents to check that out as well. We do, and this is actually a fun one for you guys. We do, as I mentioned, intend to have three in-person locations. We're going to have one at the Urban League, one out in Hilliard. And then we're also going to be, for the entire month of September, posted up at the Postal Workers Union Hall out by you all. So you all have been identified as one of the key municipalities that we want to make sure we have a physical presence in. Which is exciting. Don't tell Whitehall. No, I'm kidding. Just, just a fun tidbit for you all. Promise I'm almost done. The last thing that I like to plug is our real estate dashboard. This is live and available on our website. It's updated monthly. So right now, the most up-to-date one is the June dashboard. This is the full county level view. What's really fun about this is that you can drill down into specific neighborhoods, specific streets, all of that. And this is all based on the data that we, our office, gets through our transfer and conveyance department. So this is about as real-time as we can get it on a month-to-month basis. It's a cool thing to poke around. It's pretty cool to see the aggregate data from a county-level point of view and where those high sale densities are. So feel free to check that out as well. That's it for me. I like to try to keep it nice and sweet. Are there any questions that I can take at this time?
I have a quick question, and you may have mentioned it. But when you spoke about the Reynoldsburg area increase is 21%, I believe that's what you said.
So that is the average increase for the entirety of the school district.
Okay. So how does that compare to the past?
That is a great question. I might have to get you an answer on that at a later date.
Just curious, because I didn't see it in the chart, and 21% does sound high. I don't know. It may not be. I don't know how how it compares to, you know, the past six years when this was done. So just curious.
Yeah, absolutely. I will have our Director of Appraisal reach out and get you those specific numbers. Let me just make a note here. I can tell you that this percent shift is online, or is in line with what we're seeing across the county. It is definitely going to be, I mean, Franklin County, as we all know and talk about regularly, I'm sure, is booming. And so with that comes these, these value increases. But I can get you the specific historical data. That's not a problem. I just don't have access to those systems.
That's fine. My other question is, because Reynoldsburg is made up of three other, I mean, made up of three counties, and this is Franklin County, correct?
Correct.
So do you have any knowledge about Licking County or Fairfield?
So I do not, but I can reach out and confirm when they, when they have done their last reappraisal and their triennial. So each county in Ohio operates on a different six-year cycle. Which means that our, our triennial appraisals and our sex annual appraisals only line up with a handful of other counties across the state.
Okay.
But we know appraisers all over the place. And so I can go ahead and get the Licking and Fairfield. Yep. I can go ahead and get that for you.
Okay, just curious, and some of the other residents in Reynoldsburg may be curious to know the answer to that, since everyone doesn't live in the same county.
Absolutely.
And you also said that if anyone wants to contest the appraisal amount that is done in September?
Yes. Let me see if I can go back to that slide. Yes. If, if they wish to participate in our informal process, that will be in September. Even if, for some reason, they aren't able to participate in this September portion, we also have our Board of Revision, which essentially does the same thing that our informals do, just a little bit more formally and a little bit more process-heavy. And so if for some reason, someone is either unhappy with the way that their informal review went or is unable to participate in an informal review, they do still have access to the Board of Revision process until March 31st of next year.
Oh, okay.
And I can send some follow-up information on BOR specifically. We have a whole portion of our website and then a whole other video dedicated to Board of Revision. So I can go ahead and share that as well.
Okay, okay. That's all the questions I have.
An ask question?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. So some of this answer I might know, but I want to answer this question for the, all the residents to know, which one of the questions have already been asked by President Jenkins. But I just want to, I want you to explain a little bit more on that one. What does 21% increase means to the resident in Reynoldsburg? Can you just simplify that and make that understood easier for people to understand?
Yes, I can do my best. I'm going to preface by saying it is a wickedly complex formula. And and that is a formula that is set at the General Assembly. And it makes me remember why I wanted to go into this field of work. So property value is basically one piece of the pie when we're looking at total property taxes. So you've got levies, you've got municipal taxes. You've got all of these other things other than property taxes that go, or I'm sorry, than property value that go into your property tax. So just because your property value is increasing, let's say 20%, that does not mean that your property taxes are automatically going to increase 20%. One of the things that we do have on our website is a tax estimator. I will preface that this tool will be, it'll be going down for maintenance so that we can load the new values into it at some point towards the end of the year. But basically, it breaks down for you exactly how much of your tax bill is determined by your property value. So when I say that they're not directly proportionate, that that just indicates that a 20% increase in property value does not mean a 20% increase in taxes you must pay. That's about as simple as I can do. I will say, we have an entire PowerPoint on this, on the your2020homevalue.org website. And we are also putting together a video to try to explain this process a little bit better. Councilmember, did I, did I answer the brunt of the question?
Thank you. Yes, it was, and yeah, we, when we were in a conference, it was explained the same way that you did today. Thank you so much for that. Also, I have one more question, which I know the answer, but I want you to tell that, how you're addressing the people who speak language other than English and explaining this process?
Absolutely. So we are translating many of our, well, we were going to be translating many of our physical materials. Don't have so many physical materials anymore just because of COVID. But we are specifically translating the explanation video into a couple of different languages with the help of some fabulous community partners. And wanting to make sure that those are accessible to folks who might be non-native English speakers or just need to know a little bit more about the process. We also will have translators available anytime anyone needs one. So this is one of the benefits of scheduling is in our scheduling forum, we will give the opportunity for folks to request a translator specifically and put in what language and what dialect they personally speak so that we can match them with a translator who will be able to help walk our team and walk them through the process together. In addition, we are targeting, this is more on the wonky side, but we are targeting our outreach and our communications to communities and publications that are, that might not be reached by, you know, the dispatch or kind of some of those larger publications around town. And then the same goes for radio and digital as well.
Thank you.
Great questions. This is awesome. I don't often get a lot of questions. Thank you all.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, Cole, for coming in, and I appreciate the time and the information. Some of this might not be well-received information. But the one thing that happens with appraisals, you always want your home to be valued at. And even though you may have to pay a little bit more if the appraisal comes out high, but we want our homes to be valued in Reynoldsburg. So that's a good thing that could come out of this, right?
Absolutely. And really, the biggest thing that I'm here to just hammer home is that we are open, we are accessible. We want to hear from you all as community leaders, but we also don't want you to be afraid to send residents to us as well. As you mentioned, this is a tough conversation, and we are, we are excited to have it with our community.
Thank you. I see that the email address for your office is on our page tonight, and the phone number is 614-525-Home. So if anyone has any questions regarding the appraisal process and how that's going to take place, and if you'd like to contest it or find out other information, you can reach out to that office. And that's for Franklin County residents.
Yeah.
So thank you for coming this evening, and thank you for giving us that important information and what to look forward to down the pike.
Thank you all so much, and I'll follow up with email directly on that information that I promised you as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to our communications. And it doesn't appear as though we have any other additional communications this evening. And we'll be moving on to, next on our agenda are the motions. And we have a motion to approve a resolution to appoint members to the Reynoldsburg Community Commission. Mayor Begany, do you have any comments regarding this new process?
Yes, actually, a wonderful response all the way across, actually. We got close to 40 individuals that have expressed interest in joining this commission. After consulting with City Attorney Shook, we decided to create a, to kind of limit the task force. Uh, after consulting with City Attorney Shook, we decided to, um, create a, to kind of limit the task force leadership to a, a number of individuals, nine to start off. All that means is they're gonna help organize the process. Uh, the rest of them individuals are more than happy to participate. Uh, you should have had communication, uh, given to you about how many people for each, uh, particular committees and things like that. Um, but this is gonna be a community-led process. They're going to go ahead and, uh, we're gonna schedule a meeting, very much like this Zoom meeting here. Uh, in the next few weeks that, uh, this group can get together to kind of start outlining, um, the net, the titles of the commissions that are gonna be looked at. Are we going to continue on with, again, everybody's, uh, you know, the transportation issue? We also have, uh, New Americans Military Recognition and so on and so on. Or a few other ones that we're actually, uh, mentioned, which is kind of a Community Arts Commission, things of that nature. So the community members themselves are gonna go ahead and organize that, uh, when we get the Zoom meeting and to kind of set a timeline and have them report back to you as they go through. About their goals and objectives. Um, all this does not include the Police Commission, which obviously there was a number of people that did apply for that particular position. That'll be addressed at a little bit later of a time. Some people are going to perhaps do double duty. Maybe they will try for the Police Commission, but in the meantime, they can work on one of these other ones. Uh, that are a little bit more ready to move forward on things. Uh, the individuals that are out here are enthusiastic. Everyone had their letters. Uh, that were just very happy to be doing something, especially neighborhood beautification. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, a lot of potential out there for that to help our community. So I look forward to this passage this evening so we can get to work on. Uh, what Councilwoman Jeanette Strickland and others had mentioned to me in the past and, uh, kind of work for the, the betterment of the entire community.
Good evening, Mayor. I do have a question real quick. Um, the names that was presented to us regarding each of the, uh, board, uh, Community Commission members. I noticed that a few of them was not assigned to a particular area. Um, at, at one, what point are we gonna, you know, say, hey, make a decision or how, how is that gonna work out?
That's gonna actually be next week, cause there are a couple of them that you could probably fold into some of the larger umbrellas of things. So what we didn't want to do is we didn't wanna. Put somebody, assign them to something without, you know, without their expressed interest with it. And we figured that it would be best to go ahead and organize that when you have the entire group together. To see if they want to change, uh, the way the system is set up. If they want to expand one of it or change the name to include all. Cause again, the arts community, uh, the Arts Commission and all honesty could be a neighborhood beautification. So you could have that in one as well. So we just didn't want to put anybody in a position specifically, uh, without having that conversation, uh, with the entire group.
And all these members have already been notified and everything regarding.
Yes. Okay. Uh, we had, we had sent an email out to them, uh, once the application, you know, the interest window had closed. And let them know that once council had made the, you know, the appropriate moves to go ahead and pass this resolution, that we would be in contact with them to set up meetings. Obviously, we're gonna try and get, uh, a date where we can have a virtual meeting with as many people as possible that can apply, but if not, we will make arrangements. Uh, to make sure everybody's at least aware of it. Um, and again, this will be very public like this is here. Uh, it will be on a Zoom, it will be broadcast on Facebook Live, so that way people can be aware of what's going on as the public aspect of it. And then people are always willing, you know, and welcome to join at a later date if they choose to, if they see something or hear something at a future meeting that says, hey, that's what I want to do, or I would like to help out. Uh, never gonna turn away help, uh, not, not at all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from anyone else on council?
Uh, not the question, but the comment. Uh, so thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, uh, for creating this platform for people to come and participate in our government. And this is great beginning. Want to see how it. Uh, now this is just a seed. Now let's see how it become a tree and the fruits will be, I think we're gonna see very soon. Thank you.
Uh, the old teacher in me basically knows that I'm gonna put a couple deadlines on some things. So my hope is this is not a commission that shows up one or two times and then disappears. Uh, we're gonna have some identifiable goals and we're gonna make sure to report back to council everything. But yes, great opportunity for more people to get involved.
Do we have any other comments from anyone else on council? May I have a motion to approve this motion?
I'm moved.
Councilmember Pacaral, and is there a second? Councilmember Strickland? Oh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries, I believe, seven to zero. Thank you. I'm very excited about this. Um, at the list that we received of all the people that have signed up to be involved. In our, uh, city, um, I think it's very uplifting to see that so many people have. Wanted to volunteer and step up and participate in the process. And I look forward to. All the great ideas that are going to come out of this and volunteers that are willing to, um, to step up for Reynoldsburg. So. Um, I can't wait until this all gets started and I can participate and listen to some of the conversations that everyone is going to have. So I'm very excited that everyone can still participate, even if your name isn't on the list. You can still listen and you can still. You know, have a comment or still participate, even if you didn't sign up for any of these, um. Community commissions. So thank you for that. Um, now we're going to have a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to seek financial assistance. From the Ohio Public Works Commission, O W, O P W C. Mayor Begany, do you have any comments regarding this motion?
Uh, yes, this is a continuation of our Main Street project. As we all know, next year, uh, all of Main Street is going to get repaved. Then a significant amount of work is gonna be done, uh, in the area between Lancaster and, or I'm sorry, Davidson and Jackson. Uh, this is actually the next phase of it, the things to be done from Jackson all the way to Wagner Road to kind of continue on the progress that you'll see next year. Except with the, with the grants, we do it a year and a half in advance. So this would be, uh, for work that will be done in the year twenty twenty-two. And then that way, the entirety of Main Street will be taken care of. Uh, so this is a continuation of that project to get us in that process, uh, to, uh, apply for this grant.
Um, did Director Bowser, do you have any comments as well?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I just wanted to state that this is obviously the second phase. This will be from Jackson to Graham and Wagner Road. Uh, it'll carry through a lot of similar characteristics as the first phase, increased sidewalks, pedestrian oriented. Um, probably about sixteen feet with brick pavers, park benches, um, will incorporate some, some granite. Um, and some other features that really enhance sort of the downtown feel. It'll be a little, little different. Um, this stretch because you've got less sort of, uh, density in, in this area. Um, so it'll be a little less expensive of a project, but still very much worth our time. And I think it, it holds well with any new future development that we have sort of in that area. Any specifics or any other questions? I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Are there any other questions from anyone on council?
So you, um, answered this question quite a long time back, but I just, I think. I forget the deadline, when, when we are expecting to complete this project. And you told before, I remember that, but I forget the timeline.
Thank you, Councilmember Pacaral. Um, yeah, so as the mayor had mentioned, phase one in this, which would be from Davidson to Jackson. Uh, the plans are already, uh, uh, forthcoming. Uh, that will be started, uh, March of twenty twenty-one. At the same time, ODOT, um, alongside City of Reynoldsburg will be repaving all of Main Street. And that's District Six and Five, so both the Franklin County and Licking County side. So. Uh, everyone will have it except this piece. This will be our portion of the larger project. So that will start and finish that same year of twenty twenty-one. And then. In twenty twenty-two of March, we'll pick up and start and finish the Jackson to Graham Road section. And that would complete, um, fall, kind of a November timeframe of twenty twenty-two. Now this grant that we're applying for, you know, we received it last year. Um, we have to have it in by September and then we'll find out probably the first week of December of this year, whether or not we get it. The chances of us getting it are extremely high. Um, these programs, they really like you breaking things into phases. And because we scored extremely high on the first phase, we see that would be no different during the second phase.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from anyone else on council regarding this motion? May I have a motion to approve this motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Christian Bryant, may I have a second, please?
I'll second. Yeah, I give it to him.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Savadi, thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries seven to zero. Next, we have a motion to authorize the clerk of council to return any liquor permit requests received during the August recess to mark without a request for hearing. As long as the Reynoldsburg Police Department finds no reason for a hearing while council is in recess for the month of August twenty twenty. Unless the Police Department finds a reason for a hearing prompting a special council meeting. Clerk Pressure, may I have a comment regarding this motion, please?
Yes, Madam President, this is a housekeeping issue that as council will be in recess for all of August, should any, uh, liquor permits be received. This will allow that process to move forward unless there is a problem that the police, uh, deem that you should, um, have a hearing, then a special meeting will be called of council.
Do we have any questions from anyone on council regarding this motion? May I have a motion to approve this motion?
Still moved.
Councilmember Bryant, I believe. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Baker, second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, aye.
All opposed? The motion carries seven to zero. Next, we have a motion to recess the Reynoldsburg City Council for the month of August twenty twenty. Clerk Pressure, may I have a comment regarding this motion?
Yes, Madam President, this is again another housekeeping issue. Council will, will officially take recess for the months of, month of August, which is permitted per. Um, council rules and council chart and the charter for the City of Reynoldsburg.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Oh, Madam Pres-, um, Madam President, I do have a question. Um, in the event that we may have to call a special meeting. Um, we will just go through the normal process according to what is outlined within our charter. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. Um, can you also confirm that, Clerk Pressure?
Yes, if you, if at any time council needs to call a special meeting, you can call a special meeting as long as, um, it is noticed appropriately to the community.
Do we have any other questions? May I have a motion to approve this motion?
I still move.
Thank you, Councilmember Strickland. Do we have a second?
My second.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Um, next we have the reports. Will the clerk please read the clerk of court report?
Yes, ma'am. The clerk of court submitted a report for the month of June with total receipts of thirty-three thousand, six hundred, thirty-six dollars.
Will the clerk put, is, and that's the end of it? That's it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Would you read, um, also the auditor's report?
The auditor's office submitted the budget by department and classification for the month of May twenty twenty.
And next we have the Licking County Fire District Report. Councilmember Baker, please.
Uh, yes, Madam President, um. The West Joint Licking Fire District Board had our meeting last Tuesday and, um. It went well, um, which the western part of Reynoldsburg is still receiving, uh, really good services. Um, from our fire department. Uh, the one note that I do want to put out there and more information will be available. Um, end of August, early September is the fire district is gonna go to the ballot for levy. Uh, the reason being is because the old one is expiring and a new one needs to be, um, elected upon. This one is gonna be, um, a little more than the old one because of the growth. That western portion of Licking County has had over the past, uh, years since the last one was passed, uh, last levy was passed. And there, and so for the fire district to continue its services. Um, its current services and increase some services, this levy needs, uh, to pass. And we're actually getting ahead of the curve because of. Additional pending, uh, development that's happening along the western part of, uh, Licking County. And so. We want to make sure we stay on top of this to be able to, uh, replace those firefighters who are gonna be retiring. And increase hiring of some firefighters due to the growth of the western portion of Licking County. So I want to put that out there now so people won't be shocked when it's on the, when they see it on the ballot this fall. So, but other than that, the service, like I said, the services that Reynoldsburg is receiving from the Western Licking Fire District is. Um, really, really good. And, um, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next we'll have, um, Development Park and Recreation Committee, and that will be also from Councilmember Baker.
Oh, I guess I'll hold on to the mic. Um. No, oh, I did this computer. Hold one second, sorry. Uh-oh. Okay, sorry, I pushed wrong button. Um, this is the Development Park and Recreation Committee. Uh, meeting and members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Pacaral, Councilmember Lawson Row, myself and President Jenkins. Uh, the first agenda on, uh, first item on the agenda is an ordinance approving funds from the Unappropriated General Fund to accounts in the Park and Recreation Department. Uh, Director Bowman, would you like to speak on this ordinance?
Yes, thank you Chairman Baker. The Parks and Recreation Department received two thousand dollars from T S Tech and sponsorship monies. So I am requesting that council appropriate that from the Unappropriated General Fund into, um, the Recreation Supplies Account and the Miscellaneous Contract Services Account.
Okay, uh, is there any, uh, questions from the committee on this? Any from council? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion for this ordinance to be forwarded to council for its first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Lawson Row? Um. Excuse me. Um, is there, I'm sorry, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading. The second ordinance on, uh, second item on the agenda is an ordinance creating the Wagner Road Tax Increment Financing. Incentive District declaring a partial within each incentive district to, uh, to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation. Requiring the owners of those partials to make service payments to in lieu of taxes established, establishing a municipal. Public Improvement Tax and Increment Equivalent Fund for the deposit of those services payments. And specific, specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve partials in the increment district. Um, Attorney Schick or the mayor, would you like to speak on this ordinance?
I can start off and then we can turn it over to City Attorney Shook for some of the more specific legal issues. Um, as council is well aware, uh, one issue that has come up time and time again is the. As council is well aware, one issue that has come up time and time again is the safety and infrastructure of Wagner Road. Earlier this year, council was asked to consider the potential for apartment complexes. And one of the things that the residents of Wagner Road mentioned is the, you know, the roads before the roofs, I think was the call line of it. And so what I've done from that point on is kind of figuring out a way to make this possible for the city of Reynoldsburg. With the conjunction of the auditor's office as well as service department, development department and myself, the city attorney, we sat down and tried to game out a couple of plans on the financial aspect of everything. So there's two different parts of this. The first one is going to be a little bit more fun to watch through, so I'm going to go ahead and put on some of the shared screen things. If you were able to at some point in time monitor the town hall meeting that I had at one point in time, kind of describing all of these things, you can see, you know, you know what the roads look like. The big thing with this one is widening it for safety purposes as well as adding sidewalks and bike paths on each side. So what you'll see in some of the pictures as we kind of go through here is a project that will begin. Phase one tentatively is set for the Broad Street to Priestley. This picture that you're seeing right here is basically Main Street. And for the most part, you're going to be able to see a little bit of the darker gray line outside of the road line that would be our bike path. It would be our traditional, I believe, eight-foot bike path. And then on the other side would be our sidewalk all the way across. And you can see a number of different things, including the new entryway to Pine Quarry Park in this particular slide. So what we tried to do is we had a town hall meeting, which was very well attended from a number of residents in Wagner Road. Again, this was a virtual meeting as well as a number of things at the farmer's market over the last couple of weeks where we gathered more community feedback. So questions that typically came up around this would be, what would the speed limit be for it? What would the, you know, would everything be straightened out and leveled and things of that nature? And a majority of the topography of the roads is going to be kind of designed to the point where you're not going to lose that feel of Wagner Road, but it is going to be a little bit safer in the process of it. On this particular page, you will see where it says Priestley Drive. One very large piece of feedback that I got from community members is the concern about the safety at the intersection of Priestley and Wagner Road. So based on some of that feedback, a few suggestions that may be looked at when we get a little bit more specific into the engineering aspect of it is the potential for a stoplight at that location or the potential for a roundabout. Those are engineering things that'll be kind of determined later on, but it's something that we did get some feedback from the community as well. Talked a lot about right-of-way acquisition, things of that nature that community members were kind of concerned about, about how much would be there. And those are things that we're working on. And a lot of it has to do with the anticipated growth of the community with the additional MI Homes development at Spring Hill Farms, not too far off the road of our road. With that in there, it provides an opportunity to find funding for this project as well as, you know, compensating for the increased number of cars. As you know, there's going to be about three hundred and fifty-four homes at this particular location. And so that's where the financial issue came in. How do we pay for it? How do we do this? So we settled on an idea of a residential TIF. And after a lot of communication and given the circumstances of COVID and, you know, the state of the, you know, the economy in Reynoldsburg and the country in general, none of us felt comfortable borrowing money ahead of time from the TIF, which is something that a lot of communities do, they would borrow ahead with the idea that this money would be then brought back in and paid off from the TIF on later. The advantage of that is obviously you're getting things done a little bit faster. I'll go ahead and stop sharing on that one. So we'll get things done a little bit faster, but what it does is it puts the city at risk. And the city attorney and Stephen Sisak, the auditor, and I sat down and talked about, we needed to do something like this that would actually get the project done, but do it in a way that doesn't put the city at risk. So we looked at, and development director Bauscher alluded to it earlier about the idea of a phased approach. So you would do two parts of this. But what would trigger the actual construction of this project would be if our TIF funds, meaning the houses that are being built in the MI developments, actually get built and start collecting money. So we actually have a trigger function in this clause that says we aren't going to start this process until we reach a certain threshold of money that would actually be part of the original and a part of the cost of the project. So the couple of the scenarios are that we would look at a potential of three million in TIF funds, which would mean that you're looking at possibly about a hundred and some odd houses. They would have to be constructed prior to the construction of phase one. And then you would look at a four million dollar OPW C grant, very similar to the one that we talked about earlier, where it would be grant as well as the zero percent loan, much like again the OPW C grants, and then potentially one million or nothing, depending on what we decide to do from our actual CIP fund. And then as the TIF continues to grow, it would generate more revenue to pay off whatever the debt would be accumulated from that. The TIF fund will possibly potentially generate as much as twenty million dollars. And the Wagner Road project itself will be about fifteen point four million with a potential of about three million-esque and change for Quarry Park, depending on what public feedback is to that for when we get to that point in time. But the idea was we would not start this process until we actually had the money more or less in the bank before we moved forward with it. So that way it doesn't put the city at risk, but we can still go ahead and do the process. MI Homes is expecting a robust purchase process for this. However, we decided to take a very conservative approach. The houses are going to be starting at around two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. MI expects that the funds will be much higher, the average house price will be much higher, closer to three twenty-five to three fifty. However, we kept a lower income price of about three-ten as a, as a starting point, as well as a reduced number of houses that will be in each, in each phase, in each block, around fifty-nine houses is what's listed. They're expecting potentially as high as eighty to ninety or above, depending on what goes on. And similar developments in Plain City, developments that actually, parcels that actually already sold out long before even one phase had been done. So it had been something that had been built out ahead of time. As you know, right now Reynoldsburg is a hotspot for real estate. I think it's taking about an average of five days for new house builds to come in. And we've gotten a number of calls into the office as well as just talking with some local real estate agents about the need for housing in a particular price market that this MI development is going to have. And so we're going to go ahead and take advantage of that to build up on it. In addition, one question that came up from school board member Robert Barga was, okay, so we get the Wagner Road project and the Pine Quarry Park and things of that nature. If there is any leftover funds, what would those be used for? By statute, typically it goes back into the general fund. However, Robert and I decided that with council's approval and with everyone's on board is that these funds could actually be used to help the school districts. One example would be for those of you that have been to Wagner Road, you know that Wagner Road stops and then there's a long way before you actually get to middle school and the junior high. So maybe some of these additional funds can be used for sidewalks or bypass to move from Wagner Road all the way up to the schools themselves or other things that come out. But the idea is that we work together with our school district and the community members at large to go ahead and take care of this kind of an issue. Safety is a major concern. We all know that the young girl who was tragically killed off McNauton Road, which is very similar to what we have on Wagner Road because they don't have sidewalks, they don't have bypass and there's no lighting. This project would take care of all of those things. So again, that's one of the things that we're looking for. But the trigger part of it, and again, that's why there's not a year listed in here because we don't know necessarily what year it is. MI is expecting that they're going to hit some of these target marks. So we'd actually begin phase one construction as early as 2023. But again, we won't go to that point until the money's already in the bank account. So I'll turn it over to city attorney Shook if he has any comments about the actual financial aspect or the legislative process, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the first thing I want to address is how a TIF works. It can be kind of complicated and I'm quite certain that here in this setting, there's really no way to do the process much justice. But the Cliff Notes version is this. The property in question will have a current taxable value. You know, we heard a lot about that from the Franklin County Auditor Representative here earlier this evening. And so you identify what that current taxable value is at this time. And then that taxable value will go up as improvements are made to the TIF area. And so here we've broken this out into six incentive districts to account for the probability that there will be some houses that are built in phases. And we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want our TIF time to start running before we had increased taxable value on these properties. So we put in these six incentive districts. When there is at least two million dollars in improvements in any one incentive district, then the ten-year TIF will begin at that time. And how that money is then raised is that there will be, you identify the taxable value at the time the TIF was created and then the increase in taxable value over the ten-year period of TIF. And the property owner then pays their real estate taxes as service payments to the city. Seventy-five percent of that increase in taxable value in taxes that are paid on the real estate would go to the city. And that's money that the city could then use for public infrastructure improvements that directly benefit the TIF property. You can see in section two of the ordinance that identifies what the public infrastructure improvements would be up to, obviously, including improvements to Wagner Road. And we would work obviously on a timeframe where we want to make sure that this development is actually getting built out before we start those construction projects because we want to make sure that we are utilizing the maximum amount of the ten-year TIF as possible. Now, the process going forward here is that with a ten-year seventy-five percent TIF, we will need to hold a public hearing at the city council meeting, the second city council meeting in September, making sure that we give out proper notices to the property owner and to the school districts and to Eastland Career Center. We then have to wait thirty days after that public hearing and then council will then have the opportunity to vote on this ordinance at the second meeting in October. And so that's how the process is going to move forward from here. Does anybody at this time have any questions?
Yes, so Tiny, Shook, this is councilwoman Strickland, so I do have a question. I just want to make sure that I understand the process. So before we will be able to receive any TIF funds, approximately we need to be able to, or MI Homes, be able to sell approximately a hundred homes before that trigger actually kicks off. And then at that, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the trigger will kick in for each incentive district. So the way that the ordinance is currently drafted is that the trigger provision will not kick in until there is at least two million dollars in building improvements in any one incentive district. Now, I couldn't identify for you how many specific lots that might be. We could play that out over the anticipated or estimated price tag for each of these lots. But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a hundred lots for each incentive district, it would be much, much less than that for that trigger provision. We just didn't want the ten years to trigger when there's been no improvements in a particular district because then we're wasting time and, and there's no money that we're raising for these infrastructure improvements.
And then once that trigger kicks off, at that time, we'll be able to make updates to the infrastructure itself.
At that time, we'll start raising money in the TIF fund. We'll have a much better idea as to how much money we're ultimately going to be able to raise. And then at that time, you know, in consultation with the mayor and the city auditor, at that time, it is likely it will come back to city council for, for bonding for that public infrastructure improvements, taking into account the debated revenue we're going to raise.
Thank you.
Is there any others?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, one of the big concerns that was brought up again is with a project of this size, you know, one of the things that had been done previously is there was an attempt to get the OPW C grants and they were unsuccessful. So we wanted to make sure that we formulated a process for this. That would make those programs much more successful while limiting risk to us in this. And you'll get continuous updates as we go through. I think the only person more interested in how many houses sell in this development than MI is probably going to be me, just because I'm very curious to see how quickly things go so we can move forward with this project.
Okay. One thing I'd like to comment on that is when you go for grants and stuff like that, especially with the OWPC, they look at stuff like this, that there's a plan in place to raise money to improve infrastructure and it makes it better for us to be able to get those grants. So putting this in place actually benefits us down the road.
Well, one of the good things about this is I've had the opportunity to speak to members of the Turo Township as well as members of the school district. We actually had the Franklin County Engineer Cornell Robertson out and we actually walked some of Wagner Road. So this is not just going to be an effort that's led by the city. MI Development is also going to be contributing funds. Franklin County Engineers Offices promised to contribute funds with this to help with the sidewalk process. And again, support of the school district. So it's not just anything that's going to benefit one party, it's going to be multiple people working together to get this project off the ground because it is a monumental task that is overdue. But now I think with the right plan in place and cooperation with everybody, I think we can get it done in a way that is expedient to get it done, but in a reasonable way that doesn't put the city at risk.
Okay. Um. Is there any other questions from the committee? Any questions from council?
If you are bored, if you are bored and you want to come in and take a closer look, I know you had some of these things emailed to you, but this is also to the community as well. The bigger versions that we're seeing at the farmer's market are in city hall right now. So you can actually take your time and look at them a little bit more closely. And again, public feedback is always welcome throughout the entire process.
Yeah, I do have a question. This isn't related to this, but it's, it's similar. Especially the intersection of Rosehill and Main Street. I've noticed that it's starting to get a little more congested there because of the new Krogers and some of the other buildings that are being built there. And I did know that council approved, was it last year, the year before last year, to put a light, an additional light in front of the Krogers to help alleviate cars trying to swing out. Do you know where we're at in that process? And this is more for Andrew.
Council member Baker, I'll, I'll take this one if that's okay. Yeah, that is a great question. It's something that we're actually dealing with currently. So there is two companies in all of North America that create these signals and these mast arms and these poles for municipalities. United Metals is the one that was selected by Jess Howard Electric, who was our contractor for this. They had a couple of machines that went down pre-COVID and then obviously during COVID, they had a lot of issues. And so with two basically companies doing all of this work, they can get fairly backed up. So at times we were given thirty-six weeks, which is a really, really long time. It's looking like it'll probably double the timeframe of that. We just got an update from them that we would be receiving the signal mast arms in December of this year, which is technically outside of their contract window. So we're, you know, assessing, you know, sorts of damages as far as that company is concerned and taking a look at what can be done to sort of mitigate some of those, especially with time lost. Lot of that development across the street with the Wright-Patt Credit Union and some other potential retail that's there. It is still awaiting for that, that signal arm. So it is still forthcoming, there will be that signal that is there. We just had a lot of trouble getting those users to, to get on the ball. And, and it's just like, it was a perfect storm of events. And I don't want to put the blame on any one person, but it was unfortunate, but it is still forthcoming and we'll probably see it January of 2021 up and running.
Okay, I do appreciate it. I know it's not, well, we was talking about Wagner, but it came up. It just popped in my head, I wanted to ask that question since we was talking about improvements.
You're not the first one, I'm sure many people have. And about every day or two on Facebook, we hear something very similar. So yeah, we're working on it.
Okay, and that's good, and that's good to hear. But putting the ship back on the correct course, see how there's no other comments on this. I'd like to forward this ordinance to one of the council for its first reading. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by councilman Pacarrel. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And this ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading. As there's no other business for the Development Park and Recreation Committee, I return this meeting back over to you, Madam President.
Thank you. We will be moving on to Public Safety Law and Courts Committee, council member Bryant.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Public Safety Laws and Courts Committee meeting for July twenty-seventh, 2020. Members in attendance are council member Cotner, council member Pacarrel, council member Lawson Row, myself and President Jenkins. Item one is an ordinance to establish chapter one sixty-three civilian review board for the, for the codified ordinances of the city of Reynoldsburg. This ordinance is up for a work session this evening. And Attorney Shook, go ahead and take it away.
I'm unmuted here. Thank, thank you. In consultation with a couple of members of council. Thank you. In consultation with a couple of members of council, this is an ordinance that was requested to be put forth before council for a work session this evening. I want to give a lot of credit to our intern for this summer, Depecha Casey Cottrey. She is a senior at Reynoldsburg High School. This is something that she is very passionate about. And she did a lot of research on what other cities who have created civilian review boards have done. And she did put together the framework for this ordinance based upon her research. What we did was after we were able to prepare a draft of this ordinance, we sent a draft to the Fraternal Order of Police and to the Patrolmen's Benevolent Association to get their input and suggestions. We thought that it was important to be able to engage and involve our constituent police officers, lieutenants and sergeants to assuage any concerns that they may have and in order to ensure that our ordinance is consistent with our contracts with those unions. I'm happy to say that we met with both last week and with council for the FOP and the Patrolmen's Benevolent Association. Those meetings went very well. They had made some, they had a lot of questions. They made some suggestions for changes. We did make some changes to the ordinance. The one that's on the agenda this evening is not in its final form. There were some changes that were made late Friday, and I'll get those to council. But for purposes of this work session, I want to go through what the board would look like, what its jurisdiction would be, and briefly how the complaint and hearing process would work. So the board would be a, at least under the current draft of the ordinance, a nine-member board. It would be a very diverse board that would allow the four ward members of council each to nominate a member to this board so that you have someone from that ward who is representative of that area of the community. The mayor would then nominate the other five members, one of which would have to be a practicing attorney, one of which would have to have a law enforcement background, and two of which would have to be members of a minority race or ethnicity in the city of Reynoldsburg based upon the most recent United States census for the city. Nominations would then come before council for confirmation. All members of the board would be required to participate in a ride along with our police department and would be required to participate in additional training through what we expect to be a Reynoldsburg Civilian Police Academy so that they can get a better idea of what it is that our officers do on a daily basis and a better appreciation for how it is that they are going to be able to review complaints of misconduct of those officers from more of their perspective than perhaps maybe they otherwise would have had, wouldn't have had before they went through that training. Their jurisdiction is going to be somewhat limited because, you know, we do have contracts with the FOP and the other union. And so their jurisdiction is going to be more of an appellate jurisdiction. An initial complaint against an officer would be investigated internally by the Division of Police. If the complainant is not satisfied with the result of that investigation, they could then appeal to the civilian review board who could then conduct a hearing. There are additional protections in there for the subject officers and for other officers in the police department regarding how that hearing would work. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. But essentially, following, following the receipt of evidence, which could be in the form of documentary, video and witness testimony, the board can then reach several findings only as it relates to whether or not the conduct violated an established police department policy. The board would have no ability or to make any recommendation as it relates to a discipline, as that is something that is exclusively within the purview of the chief of police and the mayor. But they can make findings as to whether or not there is, or they can make a recommendation as to whether or not there is a violation of police policy. We've been very careful to make sure that what this process promotes is transparency within our police department. I can tell you that this is not in reaction to any concerns for how our police department acts in the community or how it is that they serve our community. I can tell you that we have not received, at least as long as I've been here, any substantiated complaint of discrimination against one of our officers. So this is not a reactive ordinance. This is not a reactive board that we would be creating. This is more being proactive in promoting that kind of transparency that we are looking for. I do want to say as legal counsel for the city that one of the concerns that I would have, or at least that I would want to make sure that you are aware of in the creation of a civilian review board, is that as it pertains to potential liability for the city, in promoting transparency, we are also putting ourselves out there more. And so that also creates the potential of more liability on the app of the city. And I'm not saying that to suggest that you shouldn't go forward with this ordinance. I'm saying that because you, as my client, should at least be aware that that is one potential drawback of a civilian review board. And I think that's a conversation I've had with Councilmember Bryant and the mayor, just to make sure that you are fully aware of what it is that we're trying to do and the positives and negatives associated with that. And with that, I'm here to take any questions that any of you might have or suggestions. This is not up for a first read. We do intend to make potentially several changes during the month of May or month of August before we present this to council for read in September.
So do we have any questions, comments, concerns from the committee?
I have a question, Chair Bryant.
Yes.
And I know that this is all a work in progress. In some discussions that I've had in my other world, when I have other hats on, there's been conversation about subpoena power. Will this council review, civilian review board have the capability of subpoenaing any video records, et cetera?
Yes, the board would have some subpoena power. They can obviously obtain anything that is otherwise a public record. And in fact, there is a provision in the ordinance that would require the Division of Police to provide those public records to the board immediately upon the filing of a complaint with the board. They also had the power to subpoena witnesses, although I would note they do not have the power to subpoena officers to testify. They can request the testimony of officers and the division of order those officers to cooperate and appear. But the board itself would not have the power to subpoena those officers. And that is something that could not happen with our board because it would be in conflict with our contracts with the FOP and the OPBA.
Okay, and I have another question. In terms of training, you shared about training. Could you give us a high-level example of training that these individuals must complete in order to be able to professionally view records and videos and have real conversations with thought leadership?
Yeah, so I don't know that, you know, we don't have anything in there about training on how it is that they're going to be able to review police reports and body worn cameras or cruiser cameras, other things that would be pertinent pieces of evidence before the board. That is certainly something that we could add in there at council's suggestion. And that's obviously the reason why we had the work session. So if that's something that the council would like to see as part of their training requirements, we can include that.
I would just like to.
Yeah, I do think that would be a good idea, counselor. Just kind of, so I think sometimes there are things that look bad, even though they're going according to protocol or vice versa. There may be something that they didn't do that they should have done, but we're not trained to know. So I think, you know, some clarification on what type of training would be fairly important.
Yes, yes. And I can, one thing I can assure you is that the complaints that come before you are going to be based on an allegation of facts as applied to an established police department policy. So the board would be fully instructed as to what that policy states. And then they would have to apply the facts to that policy, similar to how it is, and you know this, Councilmember Bryant, similar to how it is that we present a case to a jury. Policy is the law and then they have to apply the facts to that law.
Right.
Chair Bryant, I just was going to just share accolades and great appreciation that this is coming forward and that we are being intentional about engaging our community while standing in partnership shoulder to shoulder with our police force because they're important partners in our community and we respect them. And we must also hear our community because total engagement is key. Transparency is key. And this allows everyone to to be protected and to be heard. And so I just want to thank you for all the work that's been put into this. And thank you for other members of council for their work that they've been involved in giving city attorney feedback in direction. Thank you.
Yeah, I would again note the amount of work that Attorney Shook's intern, Depecha, has put into this. She has just hit the ground running. I've been so impressed with what she's done and just how quickly she just jumped in and took right to it.
And I say thank you to Attorney Shook and Depecha for all the hard work because I really look forward to this police review board. I think it's a great thing for the city of Reynoldsburg. And also it gives the community, on one hand, a look into what law enforcement does and it gives law enforcement a chance to bond more with the community. So I'd just like to say thank you, Attorney Shook and Depecha, if you're watching, thank you as well.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah. Go ahead. Go ahead. I do have a question. I noticed there were somewhere talked about a cost. Is there any potential costs associated by bringing on, you know, the members from the community? What kind of costs are we looking at, you know, when we talk about having a nine-member board? Is that something that we're going to have to work into our budget moving forward? So if you can, just talk a little bit about the costs that may be associated with bringing on this civilian review board.
Yeah, so there would only be at best potentially miscellaneous costs. And we're talking mainly, this would not be a paid board. This would be a board. So the only potential cost that could be incurred would be the same kind of cost that would be incurred by any one of our other boards, planning commissioner, BDBA, and quite frankly, there's really no cost there. We just wanted to put that in there to at least account for the possibility, even though it's something that we anticipate.
Yeah, because I was just thinking about, we're talking about training. What does that training looks like? And who's going to be doing that training? So I just wanted to put, you know, make sure that we discuss that if there's any additional training that may need to occur, what that cost may look like. But again, thank you all for, you know, working on this civilian report, review board. So I appreciate all your hard work.
I do want to address more specifically the training because the ride along, and I know some members of council here have done a ride along before. The ride along does not add any additional cost. The the Reynoldsburg Civilian Police Academy is something that does not exist just yet. But it is something that the Division of Police is currently working on. To the best of my knowledge, there's no cost associated with that training. And that's not a training that would be made exclusively available to board members. That's a training that would be made available to members of the community who are not members of the board as well.
Thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember Salvati, you had a question?
Mike, mine is, I guess, less a question and more just something I wanted stated for the record. Because if you read, since we're talking about authority, jurisdiction, duties and responsibilities, just for the record, and the attorney can chime in if he wants, but I just wanted to, for anybody that hasn't read the policy, this committee is strictly strictly focused on discriminatory conduct. So is that, is that true, city attorney? Not, so I guess what I'm saying is, you know, they have no, they wouldn't have any say on just general, you know, excessive use of force or any other complaints that may come to the against the police, just, just when it's discriminatory in nature.
Yes, it would have to be a complaint that is based on discrimination or bias directed at a person based upon a protected characteristic or a protected class.
Thank you.
And I can tell you that originally when this was drafted, it was a lot broader than that. We narrowed it, I narrowed it in consultation with the law director for the city of Bexley, Mark Fisher, who has in the past served as council for the city of Reynoldsburg in our negotiations with the FOP. We changed it in discussions with the FOP that we needed to narrow it to make sure that we were staying consistent with our contract.
Also, I do have another question. Will the nine-member board have the ability to do a racial audit if they so choose to?
Not under the current drafting, but I mean, that's a suggestion that we can certainly take on and see if that's something that could be added to the ordinance between now and when it comes back to council in September. I can't say that that's something we researched, whether we could put that in there and whether that would raise any turns regarding our contracts. But I'd want to talk with the chief of police about it, members of council who are interested in discussing it to see if that's something that you want to add in there.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, concerns?
I just have one more point I'd like to share. And I know that this is a time where it's to have the tough conversation and say something what someone else may be thinking. And in terms of the racial equity and discrimination, just because someone in our community has not experienced racism or has not experienced driving while black or has not experienced what it feels like to ride down the street, minding your own business and being pulled over for a reason that someone else may not be pulled over. This is important and I'm grateful that we're having the conversation. Everyone may not understand, but it's okay. We have to meet each other where we are so that we understand what it's like to to be in someone else's shoes. So I just wanted to put that out there to make sure that our community knows that we're in this together in order for us to, as, as we said earlier, to be better together, we must understand each other's path. Thank you.
And I do hope that the transparency that will be created will eliminate, you know, some of the complaints that we have had for driving while black, walking while black. So I'm, you know, cautiously optimistic that this can help us improve in that area. So if there's no further questions or comments from council, I'm going to move this forward in our next meeting at September 14 for first reading. And with no other business before the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee, I'm going to return the meeting back to President Jenkins.
Thank you. We will move on to Public Service and Transportation Committee. And that will be with Councilmember Strickland.
Yes, good evening. Once again, this is the Public Service and Transportation Committee meeting for July 27, 2020. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Pacrielle, Councilmember Lawson Rowe, Chair Strickland and President Jenkins. Item number one, an ordinance to amend Chapter 1711, nuance and property maintenance of the codify ordinance of the city of Reynoldsburg. Attorney Shook, would you like to speak a little bit about this?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Strickland. As I'm sure most members of council are aware, um, the city has gotten a bit more aggressive this year with respect to code enforcement, especially uh with some of our commercial properties. Um, and in the process of of investigating and and even in some cases prosecuting violations, uh, we've noticed that there are at least some changes that we're gonna need to make to our property maintenance code to do a couple of things. One is that we need to um, we need to adopt the most recent version of the International Property Maintenance Code. Uh, we've been operating under the two thousand and three version uh since chapter seventeen eleven was originally passed. Uh, and so with this proposed ordinance change, we would be moving on to the two thousand and eighteen International Property Maintenance Code with some changes. Uh, and this is something that I anticipate we may change even between first and second read uh as we take the month of August, even go in more detail uh with the, with the update. Uh, probably the most significant change is in the penalty provision. Uh, we have the expanded uh the identity of of individuals or companies that uh might be responsible for code violations, which would include uh any owner, operator, or occupant uh of a premises who could be found in violation. Uh, and we increased the uh potential financial penalty and eliminated any potential jail sentence. Uh, so the the proposed penalty would be an unclassified misdemeanor, which would be punishable by up to one thousand dollars in fines. Uh, and those fines could accrue each day that the violation continues to exist um after issuance of the notice of violation itself. We, we wanted to do it that way because what we're seeing is that there are, there are some commercial properties in the city. Um, some, some old big box lots that have significant improvements that they would need to make to get in compliance with our property maintenance code. And they're doing a cost benefit analysis and they're determining that some of them are determining that the cost of getting in compliance is much more expensive than uh the cost of being found not in compliance. Um, so we wanted to be able to increase some of those financial penalties to increase the incentive to get those properties into compliance. We also wanted to be able to expand, you know, who could potentially be found uh as a violator uh so that we would, because it can be difficult sometimes to find uh the owner of a property, especially if the property is owned by an L L C or a corporation, some of which can become defunct over time. Uh, we wanted to be able to expand, you know, who it is that would be responsible for that violation. So we included owner, occupants. Um, and of course, operator. So those are the proposed changes at this time. I do anticipate some changes between now um and the second read, so I would not ask. Uh, I I would, I would hope that council would at least keep this in uh refer, keep it in committee for the next meeting as well, so we can go into further detail about uh other proposed change.
Are there any questions from the um committee? Any count, any uh questions from council? Okay, so um I I just want to make sure, I thank you um Attorney Shook. So we're now gonna move this forward. We're gonna just keep this in committee uh for this particular timeframe. Is that correct?
I would like to move it forward for a first read, but I would like it to be in committee for the next meeting as well.
All right, um, there's no other questions. Um, I move before this ordinance to council for a first read. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. As there are no further business for the Public Service and Transportation Committee, I return the meeting back to you, President Jenkins. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the Finance and Administration Committee, Councilmember Savadi.
Uh, good evening. This is the Finance and Administration Committee meeting for July twenty seventh, twenty twenty. Uh, members in attendance are Councilmember Baker, Councilmember Bryant, Councilmember Strickland, myself, and President Jenkins. Uh, the first uh agenda item is an ordinance to accept the extension agreement from the Ohio Auditor of State for an independent public account for twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two. Uh, good evening, uh Auditor Sisak. Do you have any comments on this?
Uh, President Jenkins, Chairman Savadi, good evening. Uh, thank you very much for your time. This ordinance request comes from the Auditor's Office. It's a standard ex- uh extension agreement that comes from the Auditor of State. The Auditor of State bids out these um independent auditors and offers them uh three-year extension agreements. According to, I guess, the city attorney has added language that it is exempt from competitive bidding or it's waived because the auditor state has done so. And I'd like this to stand for its first reading.
Thank you. Um, any questions or comments from the committee on this? None, any comments or questions from council? Alright, I moved the forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second and by Councilmember Strickland. Um, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading.
Thank you.
Uh, second agenda item is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with modern office methods for the city hall copiers. Um, I didn't see Director Bowler. Does anybody want to make comment on this or?
I I can handle that, uh Chair Savadi. Uh, apologize, my webcam decided not to function this evening, so I'm kind of in between things. Um, very quick story, uh it's time for our copiers uh to be replaced. Uh, they have served their purpose well. Um, City Attorney Shook, my assistant, Detective Rosenthal, actually went through uh painstakingly to make sure that we're getting the best deal that we possibly can on new printers uh for our buildings. Uh, did go through the uh processes that it need to, and I'm sure City Attorney Shook can point in on that one, uh but we got things to print and things to move on.
Okay, so um one, one brief comment on on this piece of legislation uh for the, we're by, we would be leasing three copiers. There's two types of copiers listed. Um, both of those copiers are listed for a lease on the state cooperative purchasing program, but none of them are listed on a sixty-three month lease, which is what we're entering into. Uh, so we ran the numbers and compared it to the uh state cooperating purchasing program pricing and we are actually getting a better deal in the state bid price, uh which is why this does not to be, not need to be sent out for a competitive bid.
Thank you, uh, the Attorney Shook and Mayor Begany. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this uh agreement?
Uh, I I just have one question here. So we replacing three um copiers? And then what are we gonna do with the other existing copiers?
Well, the, the company, uh, so those were also on lease. Um, and it was, it's the same company that's leasing out the new copiers. Uh, they will come in.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Alright, so I moved the forward this ordinance to council for its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Baker. Um, any further discussion? Uh, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. This ordinance be forwarded to the coun- to council for its first reading. Uh, and as there's no further business uh for the Finance Administration Committee, I return this meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. Next on, on our agenda is the consent agenda for legislation for emergency adoption. Would the clerk please read items twelve A through G?
A, an ordinance consenting to the annexation of certain real property located at seven oh four Wagoner Road in Turo Township consisting of one hundred thirty point nine one plus or minus acres owned by Roderick C. Griffin, Kenton G. Griffin, and Laurel J. Sample, and declaring an emergency. Item B, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase a police cruiser and related equipment for the K nine unit with the Reynoldsburg Police Department and declaring an emergency. Item C, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the twenty twenty sewer rehabilitation project for the Rose Hill Kaiser Road area and declaring an emergency. Item D, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with E M H and T for construction inspection services for the twenty twenty sewer line rehabilitation program for Rose Hill Kaiser Road area and declaring an emergency. Item E, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the construction of the water main replacement project for Rose Lawn Avenue Phase Two and declaring an emergency. Item F, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with E M H and T for the construction inspection services for the water main replacement project for Rose Lawn Avenue area Phase Two and declaring an emergency. Item G, an ordinance to establish separate funds for the CARES Act funding from Franklin County, Licking County, and Fairfield County and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Items twelve A through G are part of a consent agenda. All of these ordinances stand for a second or third read and emergency approval. Unless someone wants to remove an item for, from the discussion, council will move forward with the consent agenda. May I have an, a motion to approve this consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Bryant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Strickland, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Pecaro?
Aye.
And Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
Madam President, the vote was seven zero.
Thank you. This ordinance is approved. Item eleven, legislation for a first reading. Would the clerk please read item eleven A?
An ordinance appropriating funds from the Unappropriated General Fund to accounts in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Councilmember Baker?
Councilmember Baker, Councilmember Baker, you're muted.
Okay, yes, uh, Council, uh, Council President Jenkins, this item comes from the Development Park and Recreation Committee and I would like for this ordinance to stand for its first reading.
Unless there are no questions or comments, this ordinance will stand for a first reading. Would the clerk please read a lot, item eleven B?
An ordinance creating the Wagoner Road Tax Increment Financing Incentive Districts, declaring improvements to the parcels within each incentive district to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments and specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes, President Jenkins, this also comes from the Development Parks and Recreation Committee and I'd like for this ordinance to stand for its first reading.
Unless there's no questions or comments, this ordinance will stand for the first reading. Would the clerk please read item eleven C?
An ordinance to amend chapter one seventeen eleven nuisance and property maintenance of the codified ordinances of the city of Reynoldsburg.
Councilmember Strickland?
Yes, President Jenkins, this item comes from the Public Service and Transportation Committee. I would like this ordinance to stand for a first reading.
Unless there are no questions or comments, this ordinance will stand for a first reading. Would the clerk please read item eleven D?
An ordinance to accept the extension agreement from the Ohio Auditor of State for, for an independent public accountant accounting for the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two.
Councilmember Savadi?
Thank you, President Jenkins. This comes from the Finance and Administration Committee and I asked that it stand for its first reading.
Unless there are no questions or comments, this ordinance will stand for a first reading. Would the clerk please read item eleven E?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with modern office methods for the city hall copiers.
Councilmember Savadi?
Yes, President Jenkins, this also comes from the Finance and Administration Committee and I asked that it also stand for its first reading.
Unless there are no questions or comments, this ordinance will stand for a first reading. Item twelve, consent agenda for a second reading. Would the clerk please read item twelve A and B?
An ordinance creating chapter nine, seven, three of the codified ordinances of the city of Reynoldsburg to permit the city service department to establish rates and charges for electric vehicle charging stations. Item B, an ordinance establishing section three, five, one point one nine parking at electrical vehicle charging stations of the codified ordinances for the city of Reynoldsburg.
Items twelve A and B are part of a consent agenda. All of these ordinances stand for a second reading unless someone wants to remove an item for discussion. Council will move forward with the consent agenda. If questions request that the item be removed from the consent agenda, we will move forward. These ordinances stand for a second reading. Item thirteen, legislation for a third reading and approval. Would the clerk please read item thirteen A?
An ordinance authorizing city auditor to remove equipment from the city's fixed asset list.
Councilmember Bryant?
Uh, yes, uh, this item comes for its third reading um from the Public Safety and Law and Courts Committee. I'd like this ordinance uh to stand for a third reading and approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Pecaro?
Aye.
And Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
Madam President, the vote was seven zero.
Thank you. This ordinance is approved with a seven to zero vote. Item on the agenda next, item fourteen, other council members, uh other council matters. Does anyone on council have any further items that they would like to this, to discuss this evening? Yes, Councilmember Pecaro?
Uh, thank you, President Jenkins. Um, I have some question to Director Dorman. Um, not, not need to answer right now, but maybe in our next meeting in September. I'd like to see where our street and sidewalk programs, uh the, will be in the next, uh what we're gonna do next six months to eight months' time. Um, we have spoken a lot to our community members and the people are asking uh, at certain, uh, what are our plans? So I would like to have that thing in our next council meeting, maybe in a month and a half. So, so that we can go and speak with the people and we can just figure out how we can do, how we can make those things happen. Um, so that's my first question, uh, my ask to the uh Director Dorman. Um, yeah, that's all right now.
Do we have any other items to discuss?
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, Madam President, this Councilwoman Strickland, I just want to um acknowledge the um passing of of Congressman Mr. John Lewis. Um, he was a bigger than life um human being. Um, and hero walked amongst us. A true hero lies within us each and every day. Um, this country is better than it was. However, this country is better than it is today. Um, I hope I can become the someone very similar to uh Mr. John Lewis. Um, he stood for righteousness. He stood to, um, do great things at a young age. One of his favorite thing is, uh, get into some good trouble. And that's what I hope to do, get into some good trouble. Um, this is a man that, um, did so many things for so many people, pre-quality for, um, just so everyone can hear, have a fair, uh, shot at life. And so I truly appreciate him. Another quote that he would say very often is, who's going to walk on the pages of history or her story? That's the question that we asked, um, that I asked to myself. Are you doing the best job that you can do? But again, Mr., um, Lewis is so much for so many people. And, um, it's just a really a loss to, um, the political world, to the country, um, to everyone that, um, been in contact with him, and he's going to be very missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I agree. Um, Mr. Lewis started out at a young age when he couldn't get into college and Martin Luther King helped him get into college and they became great friends and great civil rights leaders. So, yes, um, he was very important for the progress for civil rights. Um, I'd like to say a few, um, things. We're going to be on recess for the month of August, but that doesn't mean that we'll stop working. Um, we are going to, um, be available. Um, you can reach any of us, um, going to the city, um, page and reach out to any of us. Our information is available as far as our email addresses, our phone numbers, if you need to reach us in the month of August. Um, I'm going to also, um, remind everyone to go to the city's page and connect with Reynoldsburg Connect and put in your email address so that you can receive updates on things that are going on with the city of Reynoldsburg. And just to stay engaged, um, even though we won't have a city council meeting, we will still be out in the community and staying engaged, and we will answer our emails and phone calls that we may receive during the month of August. So you're still more than welcome to reach out to any of us. We will all be available.
Uh, President Jenkins, I just want to say, keep up with my tradition of thanking, uh, fir- uh, first responders, uh, frontline, uh, frontline, uh, workers who are working in the logistic industry, Krogers, John Eagles, your retail, uh, during this COVID time, and also a shout out to our firefighters and police department as well. Um, continue to work together and we can beat COVID.
Yes. Thank you. Do we have any other comments from anyone else on council? The mayor, attorney shop, yes? Uh, yes, being a mom, I would be remiss if I did not, um, uh, hold up in high regard our children, young and older, that will be going to school one way or another, if it's in person or virtual. So we are, will be preparing, uh, back to school. It, it may look a little different when we're in school, but, uh, just know that, uh, many of us are, um, are, are parents or grandchildren and will be preparing for back to school. So during our hiatus, if you will, we will be, uh, participating in our other jobs. Thank you. Do we have any other comments this evening? I'd like to thank everyone for participating in this meeting this evening. Council will take a recess for the entire month of August. The next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, September the fourteenth at six thirty P M. At this point, council is unable to announce whether the meeting will be held in person or virtually. And if there's no other further business, this meeting is adjourned and the time is eight thirty-five. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening and stay safe.
Good night.
Night, good evening.